Board workshop is now called to order. Roll call, Madam Secretary.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Katie Browning, Board President, is not here tonight, but everyone else is here in the conference room.
Thank you. Let's all please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll now move on to the presentation portion of the meeting. Tonight, we will recognize the College Wood Elementary Spel- Elementary Spell Bowl Team, state champions, and the College Wood Elementary Science Bowl Team, state champions. I'd like to invite College Woods' Principal, Ms. Olson, to the podium.
All right. Thank you so much for having us this evening. We are super honored to be here for not only our Spell Bowl team, but also our Science Bowl team. So this is under the direction of J.C. Schneider, who does all of our academic competitions as the coach. And I cannot even speak for the amount of dedication that these students have. Many of them start, I know for sure, the Spell Bowl, or it's probably now, if they're a fourth grader, for next year if they were published. But they put a lot of dedication and time into this, and they take great pride in the accomplishments that they have, as well as the Science Bowl. So we, which is an interesting competition that is done virtually, so it's not something that we travel to, but it is an exciting opportunity because there's not a lot of Carmel schools that participate in the Science Bowl. So we're very proud of our team. So we'll start with our Spell Bowl team. I'm going to have Mrs. Schneider come up and do the names of her fabulous participants.
Thank you so much for having us this evening. It's such a pleasure of mine. I was an athlete growing up, so I have a very competitive nature among myself, and now I have such passion for teaching. And what I love about being an academic bowl coach is that I get to meet some of the students as fourth graders. I get to share the classroom with some of them the following year, and then I sometimes often get to have two years with them as academic bowl contestants. And Mrs. Olson's correct, they throw their heart, their everything into it, and it's just so fun to watch them have this passion for learning and academics. And it's so great, whether we win or we don't, it's just a wonderful experience to watch them become so dedicated. And we have fun. It's just, it's just a great experience. And so we have Math Bowl upcoming, and I think some of them are like setting the standards really high, and I'm like, don't jinx it, don't jinx it, don't jinx it. So we're just, yeah, we're just hoping that we'll have an awesome outcome too with Math Bowl, but it's just been so fun this year to watch these groups flourish. And so some of them are also on both teams, so if we're going to have our photo app, we're going to have to do a quick costume change from a Spell Bowl shirt to a Science Bowl shirt. So are they in alpha order, or do we just want to kind of grab?
Yes, they are.
Okay. Because I have my list from our yearbook, but I'll just kind of...
I can help.
Okay, perfect. Okay, perfect. So we will start with Audrey. Come on up, please. And next, we'll have Mac come on up. Kian. Adam. Avantika. Tanvi. Sebastian. Sebastian may not be here. Next, we have Tayshi. Tayshi's actually traveling with his family, so he is not here this evening. William. Elena. Ella. Vidit. Ovia. Mertula. Nitya. Srada. Venisha. Emily. Lelou. And Hashir.
All right, friends. Ready? This is over. You guys are going to come shift and be my first row, and you can either sit or kneel down. And then you guys are going to shift over and be my second row. All right, looking good, parents. I'm going to give you a second. Just let me grab one official. Amazing, amazing. One second, parents, I promise. All right, go crazy, guys.
Kids can go busy, too.
I'm going to jump in while they change really quick. This is not part of the agenda, but I just have to take the night really quickly. Hopefully, we'll do this later. But we actually have three, I believe, of our four state, or yes, state championship, or I should say, competition championship robotics team kids that are here, too. So those three, where are you guys? One, two. So yeah, so that was a, that was a win from the weekend. They're going down to Lucas Oil Stadium to perform on the field for the Robotics State Championship on March 24th and 25th. So guys are doing good stuff.
Backing on that, too, there were a few team members of this year's team that were a part of our back-to-back state championships for Science Bowl. So if you were on last year's state championship Science Bowl team and this year's state championship Science Bowl team, would you please stand up so we can give you applause for that? Okay. I will just start to call you up one by one again. So we'll start again with Audrey. Come on up, please. Mac. Sina. Maya. Jiju. Nadia. Avantika. Tanvi. Venisha. Logan. Tayshi, who again is traveling this week. William. Nitya. Elena. Mertula. Srada. Ovia. Ella. Jack. Hashir.
Okay. Let's go ahead and take about a 60-second break to allow students and spouses who need to prepare for Valentine's Day to go ahead and depart. Hi, congratulations, Kian. Congratulations. Thank you so much. Okay. We will now move on to public comment. I believe there's one person for public comment, and I want to invite you to the podium here. This is Margaret Tomaska. Tomaska, feel free to share your thoughts. You will have three minutes.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Margaret Tomaska, and I'm a parent of an elementary school child in the district. I'm here today to applaud the board for including an update to the community on mental health issues. I was on the parent committee related to the district's efforts for the now-named Skills for Success. And we are inundated in the community with news about mental health issues and the like. So I really want to applaud the board for being proactive, and the school district for being proactive, and bringing the information to us, bringing the information to our kids. It's important. I learned all about Skills for Success, and that it really is focused on self-regulation and augments the, the important things that kids need to do to be able to learn. So it's not something that's taking away from what they're doing every day. I followed up and went to my district's session on Skills for Success, where we did little activities and the like with my child and other parents and their kids. We brought home little vocabulary, little fidgets and the like, and I really think it's important for us as parents to be able to, to do the same things that is done at, at school, and that really helped with that. So despite what anybody hears in the community or on the news, this is not something that should be feared or, or the like. If anyone wants to contact me, they can. I don't think the people who are, you know, have genuine concerns really will take me up on that, but nevertheless, here I am. So I just want to say again, thank you for all of you do, for, all you do for our kids and keeping them on task and happy and healthy. Thank you.
Thank you, Margaret. I believe that's all for public comments. We'll close that portion of the meeting. Let's go to the next piece, which is, next on the agenda is consent. Consent will include personnel report claims and payroll. Do I have a motion to approve the consent items? Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Okay, we will now vote. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous vote. Thank you. We'll now move on to our action items. Our action item this evening is the bid award. Carmel High School Greyhound Activity Center. Mr. McMichael, would you like to share some details here in a second?
Yes.
Okay.
Would you like for me to share those now, or are you going to?
Almost. Wait a minute. Okay. I'm trying to fill Katie's shoes, y'all. All right. May I have a mo... Do I? Oh, yeah, you can, okay. I'm going to give you authorization to share now.
Thanks, thank you. So this is a recommendation for two categories of bid awards for the activity center at the high school. You may recall that these two other bids were awarded, but these two were delayed. We had to follow up on circumstances with these bids. So this is for, the first category is glaze, glass and glazing, and the other synthetic turf, and the total amount of the recommended bid award is $1,185,580. These are the lowest, based on the lowest and most responsive and responsible bidders that met the specifications. And I would note that the bid amount did not change from the bids that were received, and this project is being funded from the 2022 general obligation bond. That's why we would recommend award of these two bids.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve action item 5.1, bid award, Carmel High School Greyhound Activity Center?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Okay, we'll now take a vote. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Unanimous vote, none opposed. Motion carries. Next, we'll move on to our workshop topic. Doctor, oh, nope, nope. Public hearing, that's right. Okay. Yep. At this time, I'll suspend the regular board meeting and open a separate public hearing to allow for public input regarding the proposed issuance of general obligation bonds and/or entering into one or more leases with building corporation, which would permit the building corporation to issue its first mortgage bonds. This is the first of two hearings on these topics. Mr. McMichael, would you like to make any comments regarding these plans before we invite members of the public to offer input?
Just, may I make a comment before Mr. McMichael begins? I want to make sure that all those in attendance and the public's aware that the project for Orchard Park renovations will not be included in the 2023 facility project proposed bond issue, and that's to ensure compliance with the dollar law. Meanwhile, the Orchard Park building will continue to be used by Carmel Clay Schools. We remain committed to the Orchard Park neighborhood and all the Carmel Clay Schools taxpayers regarding the use of this building and property. So I wanted everyone to know that was removed from this bond issue, and take it away, Mr. McMichael.
Thank you. I have a rather long narrative that I need to read as a part of the requirements, so I'll go through that, and there will be a, an overhead here, which will show the projected tax rates over the next 10 years. So I'll begin then. Notices of public hearings have been previously published to permit the board to conduct public hearings in conjunction with its consideration of the issuance of general obligation bonds and/or entering into one or more leases with a, a building corporation, which would permit the building corporation to issue its first mortgage bond. The proceeds of such general obligation bonds or first mortgage bonds would be used to pay for the cost of all or any portion of certain renovation, renovations and miscellaneous facility improvements at Carmel High School, Creekside Middle School, West Clay Elementary School, College Wood Elementary School, Prairie Trace Elementary School, Town Meadow Elementary School, Forest Dale Elementary School, and certain technology improvements and upgrades, and all projects related to any of the foregoing projects as further described. Indiana law requires that the board conduct two public hearings prior to considering adoption of a resolution preliminarily determining to issue general obligation bonds or enter into a lease or leases for the certain controlled projects. Tonight, the board will conduct the first hearing. The second hearing will occur on February the 27th. The law requires that the following information may be made available to the public at each hearing. The 2023 facility project for which the board is considering issuing general obligation bonds or entering into one or more leases consists of all or any portion of certain renovations and miscellaneous facility improvements at Carmel High School, including but not limited to improvements of an existing and approximately 14,000 square foot addition to the Polytech Department, formerly Technology and Engineering Department, which will provide additional space for the automotive and advanced construction programs, renovation of an existing space to provide a commercial kitchen and new commercial equipment, which will replace a family and consumer science, which is a residential kitchen, improvements to the radio and TV program area to include minor architectural improvements and replacement of outdated radio and television equipment, a mid-cycle renovation of the Freshman Center, and construction and equipping of a support building at the Carmel High School stadium, which will include handicapped restrooms, locker rooms, concessions, and a hospitality room. Certain renovations of, consisting of paving repair and resurfacing, I'm sorry, certain renovations and miscellaneous improvements at Creekside Middle School, including but not limited to improvements of paving repair and resurfacing, concrete repair and resurfacing, signage improvements, repair or replacement of parking lot lights, landscaping improvements, and renovations and improvements to the auditorium. Certain renovations and miscellaneous facility improvements at West Clay Elementary School, including but not limited to improvements consisting of repair or replacement of finishes throughout the facility, paving repair and resurfacing, playground upgrades and improvements, signage improvements, repair or replacement of parking lot lights, and landscaping renovations and improvements. Certain renovations and miscellaneous improvements at College Wood Elementary School, Prairie Trace Elementary School, Town Meadow Elementary School, and Forest Dale Elementary School, including but not limited to improvements consisting of paving repair and resurfacing, repair or replacement of parking lot lights, and landscape renovations and improvements. Technology improvements throughout the school corporation, including but not limited to improvements consisting of district-wide devices such as laptops for students and staff, network equipment, and various classroom technology equipment such as projectors, sound enhancements, et cetera, and all projects related to any of the foregoing projects. The maximum principal amount of bonds is $39 million. Maximum term of the bonds and lease for the bonds, 15 years, lease term is 17 years. Estimated interest rate on the bonds is 5.5%. Estimated total interest cost for the bonds is $22,9,533. If the board adopts a resolution making a preliminary determination following the second public hearing on February the 27th, a notice of that determination would be published, and property owners or registered voters would have 30 days following the publication to file a petition requesting the application of the local public question process for the proposed bonds and/or lease. The school corporation's current debt service levy is $31,447,442, and the current debt service rate, which is 31.2 cents per $100 of assessed valuation. The estimated increase if the bonds are issued and the leases entered into by the school corporation to the debt service levy is $6,858,000, and a tax rate of .0680 cents per $100 of, of valuation. Please see the attached slide for the debt service levy and tax rate estimates over the next 10 years. The percent of the school corporation's current and projected debt service payments divided by the net assessed value of the taxable property within the school corporation, excuse me, which is the net assessed value, is approximately .37%. The percent of the school corporation's outstanding long-term debt, coupled with the outstanding long-term debt of other taxing units located within the school corporation, divided by the net assessed value, is approximately 12.69...
Mrs. Whiteside?
Wonderful, well, thank you. So I know the topic of mental health can be a heavy topic. However, as a therapist, I always like to say it's important to really look at growth, to look at progress, and to look at our opportunities, and so I'm hoping to share that with you here tonight. I'm starting off with just an overview of the many different services that we're able to provide here in Carmel Clay Schools. Last week, we, uh, we offered our appreciation to our counselors and social workers. And I'll start off with just talking a little bit about the wonderful things that they do for us in the realm of mental health services. So usually, our social workers and counselors, when it comes to mental health, is the first step in the process. So if we have a student who's having a difficult time and requests to see the counselor or social worker, often we have parents reach out to us and ask if our social workers or counselors can check in with some of their children or their students. And then also even adults in the building are able to connect a student with a social worker or a counselor. And in that role, they're really providing what we would call brief solutions that are strength-based and, once again, solutions-focused. So maybe they had an argument at recess with a peer, and so that social worker is going to help them work through that. Or perhaps they have a big test coming up, and they're very nervous, and they're worried about how they're going to perform. So they may help them work through some of that anxiety and that worry so that they're able to do the best they can do and really learn new skills to, you know, better manage some of that worry. They also do provide classroom support for executive functioning and any additional support or coordination that's needed so that we are able to make sure that they are getting the best education. And they also provide assistance with any referrals or resources that student may need moving forward. So whether that is connection to our youth assistance program or a connection to our extension providers or even outside providers as well. We often will help with different resources that do affect mental health but may not be directly linked, such as help with utilities or, you know, help with some of our students who are experiencing homelessness. And so there is a wide variety of services our counselors and social workers are providing. However, sometimes we know that our students may have an issue or a concern that isn't easily fixed within that hour or so that they may meet with that social worker. And so we may need to make a referral for something more intensive or something that can support that student or that family even outside of the school. And so one of those resources is our extension services. And with our extension providers, they're able to provide that extra level of support and care when it comes to mental health services. So they are the ones with parent permission that are providing assessment and diagnosis. They're engaging that student and that family in the treatment planning process and discussing together what services are offered and what services they would like to provide. We are fortunate to have licensed professionals in our buildings that provide mental health therapy. And then we also have bachelor's level skills training as well, which that's going to be a lot of coaching and support in and out of the classroom to help students acquire the skills that they need to better manage their mental health. This is directly related to their mental health diagnosis. So whereas we might see a social worker or a counselor working with the student on executive functioning, the skills trainer through extension might be working more specifically on management of anxiety when in the classroom or, you know, management of frustration and anger when interacting with other students. We also have case management supports available as well. Once again, you know, we are providing our extension providers may have referrals, they may participate in coordination and linkages outside of their services. However, once again, those are going to be related to their mental health diagnosis. So those would be specific to medication management. Maybe it's a higher level of care if they're needing an intensive outpatient service or a residential service. They're assisting with that. And then our medication management services, which are conducted off-site. So a student would be meeting then with a psychiatrist or a nurse practitioner as related to their diagnosis and then receiving medication as needed. And then, once again, a parent guardian, and that student would be attending that appointment. So with our social workers and counselors, I often am asked, you know, how does my child, you know, know about the social worker and counselor? How do they get connected with the social worker and counselor? And that is something we really want to make our students aware of this resource and our families aware of this resource. So really, the process often starts with the student or family. Often, an adult might be making a request if there's something that they may see in the classroom or if the student brings up a concern. And, you know, it might be middle of the day, middle of classroom, and so we're so fortunate that we do have individuals that are able to support that student. So our social workers and counselors will meet with that student and determine what's going on. You know, if the student has a concern or is feeling overwhelmed, they're going to try to, once again, initiate those brief solutions and support that student in acquiring skills to support them as they're trying to move through whatever concern or challenge they may be facing. And so with that, our social workers would then also be coordinating and communicating with caregivers and parents to offer support, to work together, just to see how we can just kind of wrap our services around that student to make sure that they're able to get back to class and have a better day. Our social workers and counselors also would support the student in the classroom, as I had talked about previously. So if there is a situation that may prevent that student from going back to class, we would be working with the family to ensure that, once again, we're getting linkage to an outside resource that we're helping to connect them so we're able to, you know, eventually eliminate that barrier. With the referral process for extension, so there are a few more layers there because, you know, our social workers and counselors are employees of Carmel Clay Schools. Extension is our partner, so it's wonderful that we have a place for them in each of our buildings. But, once again, that is really starting with that caregiver's approval, they, and outreach. And usually, there's a consistent pattern where we have determined that just additional level of services are needed. So the caregivers may initiate, hey, I've heard you had the service, we really want to enroll our child in these services. However, sometimes there may be something that we're observing at the school, and at that point, we would be reaching out to the caregiver to initiate that referral process. So with that, we would be coordinating with our extension providers, who would be reaching out to the family and scheduling that initial assessment. And then from there, as I mentioned earlier, they would be working on what goals does that student have? What objectives do they want to work on? They often identify SMART goals to make sure that we're moving in the right direction and we're able to measure that as they go along. And then, once again, that plan is finalized, often with a release of information so that we can continue that coordination with the school to ensure that we are doing all that we can do to support that student in the classroom. So getting into our mental health services. So fall 2020, we started our partnership with Extension St. Vincent, and we'll talk a little bit about staffing, but we were fortunate, by October, I believe, we had about five providers, by December, around eight. So we, we started off, you know, much better than we thought, but still not fully staffed. Around that time, where it started to get out, and we started with ninety-seven referrals. Fall 2021, we had two hundred and eight referrals. And then we left our first semester this year, or this school year with two hundred and ninety-nine referrals. Now, looking at the number of students receiving services, in fall 2020, we had about ninety-seven, so we were, we were doing pretty good. We were a hundred percent on conversion there. But, um, fall 2021, we had three hundred and eighty-two. In fall 2022, we had five hundred and sixty students that were receiving services through extension. So there's been quite a steady increase there. Now, just looking at the number of therapy services, so those are those sessions with a licensed mental health provider. Fall 2020, once again, we had about ninety-seven students, we had about three hundred and two services. Fall 2021, we had about two thousand six hundred and eighty-four services. And then 2022, we had three thousand eight hundred and twenty-four services provided. Looking at some quick fast facts, about currently, about fifty percent of students who are enrolled in services are actually between the ages of eight and eleven. Since the beginning of the program, we had over a thousand two hundred and forty-two students that have been referred to the program, and over nine hundred and five students have been served. So in mental health, a seventy-three percent conversion rate is really good, actually. So we're really excited that basically when we are making that referral, students are following up with that resource, or families are following up with that resource. So we look at the percentage of where our referrals are coming from. So the caretaker through school referrals, those are often the caretaker contacting the school and asking the school to help facilitate a referral, or it may be the school reaching out to the parent and obtaining that permission and talking through what services are available. And then we also have our caregivers through the school stress center, or I'm sorry, the, the center, Stress Center access. So we do have a dedicated person at the Stress Center that is able to focus on our students. So when they call the Stress Center, they're able to direct them, and we have about twelve percent, and we're continuing to see that number grow. Where families are feeling, you know, empowered to contact the Stress Center directly and enroll their student in those services. And we are averaging about sixty intakes per month. So that has stayed pretty consistent and, and really even increasing, you know, during certain months as well. So looking at year-to-date, so January was a very productive month. It was very busy, a lot of services were being provided. We've had about five hundred and sixty unique students who have been served this school year. When we include since August 2022, when we include January, it was actually four thousand three hundred and thirty-six therapy sessions provided, two thousand three hundred and thirty-nine skills training sessions provided, and one thousand seven hundred and ninety-eight case management services, and that is just through extension. So, and we're really grateful because, you know, part of doing this programming was really working through, how do we obtain this data? And, you know, we've been fortunate to work very closely with the program manager and the supervisor there in order to, you know, we're pretty much monthly reviewing this data and really looking at that and really exploring how we can continue to make the most of the services that we're able to provide. This January, extensions serve fifty-seven percent more students than in January 2022. So we're definitely seeing those numbers grow. So in fall 2022, we had about twelve licensed therapists and five behavioral health technicians. We currently, our extension currently has one licensed therapist position open, and then three behavioral health technician positions available. Some of the challenges that we have been seeing as we've continued to grow this program is just, number one, demand. There is a lot of demand, as I said, a lot of people, which we're very fortunate, a lot of people are reaching out and requesting those services. However, as we know, you know, we have one person at least in each of those buildings, and some, like our high school, we have more. However, there's only so many hours in the day, so we try to do, and they try to do as much as they can. However, as demand continues to grow, that's something that we continue to look at and how we can better meet those needs, really looking at what areas we're seeing the most need and if we need to make any changes or coordinate differently so that we're able to address those needs. We also see the growth of those high deductible plans or families experiencing difficulty maintaining services because of high deductibles and payment. Because as we know, extension services does go through, you know, insurance or private pay. And so we have been fortunate to work with our education foundation to receive a grant a couple of years back where we were able to contribute to a Rise and Grow Fund that could help support families that were struggling to pay for some of those services, including the high deductible plans. We've had over twenty-six families take us up on that, and I actually just approved two today as well. So we're very fortunate because those are families who may have dropped down of services or may have asked to decrease services because of that challenge and that barrier to be able to afford that service. And I'm grateful for extension because I know that they have worked with us a lot when it comes to how do we eliminate some of those barriers? So providing free support when it comes to identifying, you know, insurance plans that are affordable for them or, you know, if there's certain members of the family who are able to be insured. They have really helped, you know, work through that with many of our families. I'm going to move on from extension and just talk about some general data as it pertains to our buildings and our district, district, including, you know, services that are provided by our social workers and counselors. So one thing that I have, that has been on my radar and that I have been since I started in 2019, really researching and really trying to develop is just our protocol in response to risk related to suicidal ideation. So we currently use the Columbia Suicide Severity Risk Screen. And, and as you can see from our numbers from 2019 to January 2023, we have seen an increase in the amount of screens that we are doing. In 2019, when I started, we really looked at what is our process and procedure? And, you know, we really looked at how can we do better? And so one of the things that we started doing was just doing better documentation so we had better data. And so that might be one of the reasons for some of that increase there. But what we also did in 2019 with David Woodward, our Director of Student Services, was to implement QPR, which is Question, Persuade, and Refer. And that is our research-based suicide prevention protocol. And so our teachers, especially those who are teaching grades five and up, do receive that training, and it really does help with identifying risk factors and red flags that we need to be aware of that a student may be contemplating suicide. And so part of that number increase may be, you know, from, and we believe it is from our staff and fellow students recognizing some of those red flags. And so I really see when I look at that one hundred and forty-two, that's one hundred and forty-two students who were potentially considering suicide, that were able to sit down with a counselor or social worker and develop a plan for how to cope with those overwhelming feelings and working with families to identify what referrals and resources that they could tap into to help support their child. Another thing that has been remarkable is our STOP IT. So STOP IT alerts have been really helpful for students and families to be able to submit concerns when they believe that a friend, a peer, you know, another student may be contemplating suicide. And so we've received just this school year thirty-seven alerts that were related to self-harm or suicidal ideation, where we have had an administrator or another building or district-level professional be able to respond and support that student. I'm so grateful for our administrators and our district leaders who are monitoring STOP IT. We do monitor that twenty-four seven, so if it's three o'clock in the morning, they're going to get a response. Also, just the collaborative work that we have been doing with our school resource officers with Extension St. Vincent and some of our other key stakeholders like the Youth Assistance Program, we have really been able to look at how can we wrap these services around the student? How we, how can we continue to support the student outside of the building where they may be experiencing additional challenges and barriers that are coming into the classroom? And then mark your calendars because in May 2023, we will be having our Caretaker Suicide Prevention Awareness. for how to cope with those overwhelming feelings and working with families to identify what referrals and resources that they could tap into to help support their child. Another thing that has been remarkable is our Stop It. Um, so Stop It alerts have been really helpful for students and families to be able to submit concerns when they believe that a friend, a peer, um, you know, another student may be contemplating suicide. And so we've received just this school year thirty seven alerts that were related to self-harm or suicidal ideation where we have had an administrator or another um, building or district level professional be able to respond and support that student. Um, I'm so grateful for our administrators um, and our district leaders who are monitoring Stop It. We do monitor that twenty-four seven, so if it's three o'clock in the morning, they're going to get a response. Also, um, just the collaborative um, work that we have been doing with our school resource officers with Extension St. Vincent and some of our other key stakeholders like the Youth Assistance Program. We have really been able to look at how can we wrap these services around the student? How we, how can we continue to support the student um, outside of the building where they may be experiencing additional challenges and barriers that are coming into the classroom? And then um, mark your calendars because in May twenty twenty three, we will be having our caretaker suicide prevention awareness. So we have been doing suicide awareness training for caretakers um, since twenty twenty. And so that's something that, you know, I offer yearly and I know that we have a lot of parents take me up on that offer as they also are looking for, you know, what are those red flags? What are those clues and warning signs and how, and what can I do? What do I do if I see this or I hear of this? And so that has also been really helpful because I've had families and parents reach out to me. Um, just to, whether it's to express a concern about their child or another student, and then we're able to take it from there and coordinate that assistance. So also looking at just crisis um, awareness, response, and prevention. So we have, in two thousand nineteen, we started to work um, with other Hamilton County schools in developing the Prepare Model. So the Prepare Model actually comes from the National Association of School Psychologists. It is um, a vetted, research-based um, response when crisis occurs. And that could be anything from crisis, from, you know, the death of a loved one to larger-scale crises, natural disasters, um, even a student who's lost their dog, you know? Depending on how um, that individual would define a crisis, we are trained to respond to that. And so what is very nice is that other Hamilton County districts are also doing Prepare. So we're also able to support each other when larger-scale crisis occurs. As we know, um, caretakers are often overlooked when crisis happens and it can be very exhausting when we're responding to crisis, um, because it's very emotionally taxing. And so what's nice is that we have other support so we can care for the caregivers as well. So, and I like to brag about this too because in two thousand nineteen, we started this. But I have been so excited that we've had over twelve of our building administrators go to this two-day intensive training. Um, by far, I would say the most out of any other Hamilton County district. So I'm always very proud of that because this is not a mandatory training. Um, but our building uh, administrators are just at the front line often when we have to respond to a crisis in managing the building and managing their staff and managing those students and families. And so we have many that have participated in this training and have sent their social workers and counselors as well. We now have over forty employees that have been um, to that two-day intensive training. And it has really helped us develop our protocols for responding to a mental health crisis. What's nice about the Prepare Model is that it coincides very nicely with our school safety response. So David Woodward and I work very closely, but each step is the exact same. I'm just looking at it from the mental health side as he's looking at it from that physical safety piece. So it really um, does make it seamless when we're responding to very difficult situations. And as we know, when crisis happens, it is very difficult to respond rationally at that moment. And so it's nice to have a protocol and people who are trained in place who are able to respond when that does occur. Because we find that with this training and with um, us utilizing that research and evidence-based protocol, the outcomes for students improves drastically. And then going on to our Culture of Care Week. Um, and so really our Culture of Care Week, um, and I know we were really excited about, about being a part of the bell ringing process there. But it really starts with our, our high school, Carmel High School. Um, in two, in twenty seventeen, before I came, um, you know, a team got together and they said, you know, this tends to be a stressful time for students, you know, there's lots of exams and testing going on. You know, it's a, it's a, it's a long haul until spring break. Um, but we want to make sure that they are aware of just what is mental health and mental wellness? And how do you support that? How do you, you know, empower students to engage in activities that, you know, just help them, you know, cope with the day-to-day and even thrive in the day-to-day? And so they've really focused on developing a form of education, awareness, and even celebration that would help support, you know, those students. And I was so excited when I heard about this coming here in two thousand nineteen, that by twenty twenty, we actually decided to take it out district-wide. And so we were really excited to do our um, twenty twenty Carmel Clay Schools Culture of Care. And so um, this year, we really wanted to focus on just bringing a light to mental health awareness. Um, we had a great Spirit Week, um, we had themed days. And that was all the way from our elementaries to our high school. Also doing just different activities that just spreads awareness of just what are those different everyday habits, activities? And then even long-term skills that you can develop that really help promote mental wellness. Because as we know, when we look at overall mental wellness, we really are looking at just the climate of our building. We're looking at challenging academics, all of that contributes to just overall wellness and health. And so really trying to promote all that we're doing to, to bring that awareness to our students and families. And I just want to share a little bit of feedback. I actually was fortunate. I got a lot of great feedback from administrators, students, and families. But I thought I would share one from each level. Um, this one comes from one of our Clay Middle School parents. Um, expressing their excitement at having, you know, some support for their daughter and um, really just their appreciation of the school-based programming and the availability to their family. Here we have um, one from our elementary school parent, um, just talking about that collaboration. And what I really appreciate too is just recognizing that it's really nice that their daughter's able to receive this service in school. Um, and it really helps as a working parent that they're not having to leave work, pick up their child, leave for an hour, drop them back off, and then go back to work. And then I love this one because it comes directly from a Carmel High School student. Um, and I really love how they talk about just the collaboration between the school staff and the extension staff and how having that social worker, but also having that therapist, has really changed their high school experience and provided them with additional support that, you know, are really, that's really helping them thrive from the sound of this. So those are my updates. I just want to thank you so much for having me and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Whiteside. Uh, I first want to start by saying thank you so much for your strength and perseverance. I know your journey in making sure students have what they need to feel supported has not always been the easiest, so thank you. Um, I just have a couple of questions.
Sure.
One is, I wish we had a stat on the likelihood that students or families would get these services if we didn't offer them in the schools, because I think that would be an impressive stat to share. So just a comment, not necessarily a question, unless you have that. Do you have that?
I do not. And, you know, unfortunately, and I'm hoping eventually we will get there. You know, prior to this partnership, we, we had zero data on how many students were obtaining services, mental health services. And so a lot of this is becoming our baseline data so that we're able to really start looking at just those additional points that we can reference.
Yeah, I'll, I'll look forward to maybe seeing some data to that point because I think it would be a substantial statistic. And then, um, you know, I have a question just around the makeup of the staff. So, you know, having two minority kids in the school districts, I'm just wondering, what is the strategy or approach that we take to ensure that either, you know, counseling staff or um, the therapist staff, there is a diverse makeup so that students feel like there's that psychological safety when they go and speak to someone, you know, believing that perhaps the person that's going to be supporting them may have dealt with some similar challenges? So could you speak to that?
Yeah, and I, I appreciate you bringing that up because um, you are absolutely right. You know, individuals that are seeking out mental health support really do better when they have an individual that reflects them. So whether that's culture, religion, you know, race, any type of demographic, or just lived experience. Um, there's definitely that factor that really helps support our students. So that's where extension and I have worked very closely in how we're recruiting staff and how we're supporting staff. I will say I've definitely seen an improvement, an increase in this, in the individuals who are being hired. We're fortunate right now, um, we do have about twenty-four percent of our providers do identify as black and seven percent as Latino. And so I am excited in that this program, out of the many programs that I've overseen, um, you know, throughout the state, that this happens to be one of the more diverse programs and we're continuing to grow that, which is exciting as well.
Thank you so much, Stephanie. Team, questions?
I just wanted to thank you for what you do as a parent of a child with special needs. I really appreciate everything that you do for our kids.
Thank you.
You know, I, I look at this and it's, it's quite an extensive program you put in and it's, it's impressive and I, I thank you for that too. It's, it's astonishing to, to see the numbers um, that you showed. And what I see you put in place is a, is a great response to something going on. And my, my question would be this specifically is, is what is causing uh, this problem to be such a huge percent of uh, you know, the issues we're dealing with? I mean, what, I, I look at it from, you know, I've been around a while and um, I've talked to some administrators and they said it used to be you'd have a couple challenging situations at a school. Now you have like a couple in every classroom, so it's like there's something, have we looked at what's causing so much uh, of these kinds of problems? And what, and what are we doing to be preventative? What can we do at the earlier ages to prevent it? Because it, you know, looking at your graph, I don't know how much is a, it's growing because of an awareness. The services are there or is the problem growing? So it's, it's alarming.
Right. I would say all of the above. I know there is a lot of research still going on our, on, you know, how is technology, for instance, affecting students? But then also looking at, you know, how are they connecting with each other? You know, what is the level of stress on students even? And so I think that, you know, hopefully we'll start to get more clear answers from that. Um, but I do think that it's, it's definitely a mix too of just having that environmental support, whether that's at home, at school. Of course, we would like to see all of those um, factors being considered and in putting, you know, just supports in place that can really help students in all of their environments. Um, we're just fortunate enough to address that in the school. I do agree though, I do think that awareness is key. I think we have, um, and I, I definitely hope it's from um, destigmatization, but we have a lot more students coming forward and honestly talking about their experiences and, you know, advocating for themselves to receive those services. And we have families reaching out and requesting those services. And I think that says a lot that, that was something I would not have seen fifteen years ago or twenty years ago that I'm seeing now. And I think it speaks a lot to, once again, an environment that really focuses on destigmatizing. Um, basically, if, if you need help, let's try to get that for you. And, you know, we have a long way to go. We're still continuing to work on that. Um, prevention is key. And so we really hope that we'll just continue to cultivate some of those resources that are going to go more to the prevention side. Um, and hopefully, you know, we'll get to that point where treatment starts to go down as that prevention goes up.
Do you think social media with the children has any kind of influence on these problems?
Yeah, I mean, I think it depends on the student. I think it depends on their mindset and, and their viewpoint of social media. Um, you know, of course, I feel, we talk about that well-rounded individual that they have many supports in different areas. And so I think a student who maybe reads something negative about themselves on social media, who they're going home to a supportive household and they have lots of friends or they're involved in lots of, you know, or not lots, but even a few, you know, hobbies or activities that really bring meaning to their life, they're at much lower risk of, of having negative outcomes than those students who don't have that type of support. And so that's where we talk about those school social workers and counselors being so important because not only are we just addressing mental health as it pertains, or as it pertains to a diagnosis, we're really looking at that whole child and what are additional resources? Do they need assistance, funding assistance so that they can engage in extracurricular activities or pursue that hobby? And that's really been beneficial and I think that helps increase the protective factors for those individuals.
Would, would you also say that uh, the Skills for Success program is, is one of those means that the, the school is attempting to use as a preventative measure to helping kids?
Yes, absolutely. And it, it really goes down to, you know, what our teachers do best, which is teaching. And so being able to help students acquire those skills so that as they're, you know, engaging in those academic conversations, that they're feeling confident, they're assertive, and they're really able to stay engaged and stay curious about learning. And so we're really excited um, about, and as we know too, many teachers have been teaching Skills for Success for decades. Um, it is something so important. Um, you know, anecdotally, I know my own child was working on some of those skills and we saw a sixty-five percent improvement this year in academics. So these skills are academic in many ways. Um, we know that our students need these skills to really show us what they know. And so I'm really excited to see a lot of the work that has been done with Skills for Success because we know that, you know, Skills for Success, we know that, you know, rigorous academics, and we know that equity and inclusion, those are all a path to mental wellness.
But, you know, I'm, I'm concerned with, we've had social emotional learning programs at Carmel, I think, for, since about twenty fourteen or something like that, not really sure. But I would hope that those kinds of programs and efforts would, would uh, have some kind of a help. And, you know, my question is, are they effective? Or is there, you know, I, I'm just astonished at how big the problem is. And if we've been having this kind of a program in place for so long, you know, why do we have this? I, I see it as a crises. I mean, I, I'm, I'm very glad for what you're doing in, in the district. I think we've got, you know, all kinds of uh, help things in place. But it's uh, the trajectory you show is, is startling and it's like, is it going to uh, you know, flatten out at some point? Or is it uh, is it going to get worse? And I'm just really worried about what can we do on the prevention side. I, I know you've always addressed that. But the social emotional learning, I would think, would have the kids prepared to deal with the various situations and the DEI with, you know, bullyism, uh, those kinds of things that can be so painful and difficult for kids to deal with. So, I don't know, any comments on that?
Yeah, you know, and unfortunately with media and, and other thing, I shouldn't say fortunately media, but unfortunately, sometimes there is a tendency to look at what's not going right or what's going wrong. And I think that, you know, for some of those stories, we have a lot of stories of students who are, you know, winning spelling bowls and winning science competitions and students who are looking out for one another. And so I think that's also really exciting. I, I, I like seeing those numbers go up because that means somebody who needs services is getting that service. However, um, I, I would say going along with the, as you mentioned, Skills for Success, because I know that's definitely something I think about all the time, is how can we prevent? Um, as we do see the, you know, the Academy of Pediatrics saying that we're at a, you know, a state of crisis with mental health. And so really looking at, once again, what are all the supports? Because much like mental health intervention and treatment, we know that an individual who has just several avenues of support, who has even just one caring adult, um, they're going to do, they're going to take those skills and go so much farther than somebody who may not have that support, um, not just in the classroom but outside the classroom.
Thank you so much, Stephanie, because, you know, I want to back up that point. As Greg has mentioned, um, you know, from twenty fourteen, perhaps that's when we started social emotional learning in our schools. We've seen the, the unrest in society steadily incline. And so I'm just grateful that we have social emotional learning, um, diversity, equity, inclusion programs. Um, you know, the success programs as well and support around students who need, have special needs um, in place. And so as we are increasing these programs, along with the unrest in society increasing, we're trying to meet these demands. And so I'm just really appreciative of the intentionality we have in Carmel Clay Schools to that point. So just thank you so much. Any other questions before we go ahead and conclude?
Um, I would just echo what you said and this is, I think, very impressive and gratifying to know the numbers are going up because more people feel comfortable accessing those services, which is important. And as you mentioned, um, eliminating the stigma and getting the word out in the community and letting parents know it's accessible, bringing us the partnership with Ascension, which makes it much more feasible for people to take advantage of it, looking at some measures to allow for better funding when people need help. So I would say the increase is, should be seen more as a success for our community. Anybody that grew up as a teenage girl knows that since the beginning of time, kids have had difficulties in navigating the constructs and the relationships that they have. And had there been more opportunities like this, um, when some of us were growing up. And had there been more opportunities like this when some of us were growing up, I think it would have been really helpful. Instead, you are winging it. And now, I think because of the community-wide support, it's allowing little boys to get the access and the help that they need as well. Girls were probably much more likely to reach out for something like this initially, which is why maybe the numbers started at a smaller amount. And then as people realized it's not scary, it's confidential, it's affordable, other people are doing it too, it became much more culturally acceptable for everyone in the community to do it. And we all know that in different religious groups or ethnic groups, there are stigmatisms. And so to know that it's more widely acceptable, I just think you're doing a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, thank you again. Dr. B., could you go ahead and give us your update?
Before, I just want to say, there's two people sitting in the room over on my left side, and John Ferguson from St. Vincent Ascension is here with us. And what a great partner to have. And these two people have done miraculous work, I would say. You need to realize that along with all the other shortages in the world, mental health therapists is a, are very hard to find and very hard to hire and keep. And so the collective work of that partnership has been nothing short of miraculous. And when I say that is, I've got a little bit of experience in trying to start these up. And we were fully staffed the second year, I believe, of implementation. And I was thinking it would be more of a four or five-year process. And so just collectively, I appreciate both of you and a lot of talent sitting on right over there. And I think we're fortunate to have good leadership like that. And I can tell you specifically and accurately that lives have been saved through the things that were mentioned. QPR, having, I don't know if you caught that stat, 650 staff members trained in QPR. That's crazy. And I think Stephanie did almost all of them? Yeah. So it's remarkable that she's still standing. That's a lot of training. It's a two-day training. And to have that many staff members take that training is another impressive thing. About the Stop It app, and you've probably heard, we heard David Woodward tell some of those stories, but we're two impressive things. One is there's a system that people can reach out for help. The other one is that peers are reporting on Stop It app. I'm concerned about my friend. I don't think they're in a good state right now. And literally, people, we've sent, officers have responded to that at night and saved kids' lives. So literally, that's happening. And then finally, as an old guy, I'm not looking at you specifically, Greg, but I think we're pretty, we're in the same age group, I think. When I was in the business as a school guidance counselor, you know, in 1990, you know, it was to get mental health services or even really to talk about mental health services, a very large stigma that we didn't want to, you know, we didn't want to talk about that or do anything about it. And so now here we are in 2023, and we've got kids and families that are like, they're, they've come to that realization, it's okay not to be okay. Mental health issues are very similar to physical health issues, that it needs to be addressed and there should be no stigma attached to that. And it's okay to not be okay and it's okay to reach out for help. And I sound like a broken record with that, but it's really, really important. Another thing I would add, being a guy that's been around, you know, from the inception of social emotional learning, Skills for Success, a lot of different names we get for that. There was a point in education, and Roger might know about this too, but Amy's too young and Dr. O., but there was a time where we were having a lot of dysregulated kids, a lot of kids that experienced a lot of trauma and they had a hard time managing a school day. And that was what worked. It was the only thing that was working was teaching, taking some time, it was like taking steps back and saying, let's teach some basic skills and let's talk about what it feels like when you're anxious and what are some things you can do when you're anxious? And teaching skills that kids could use. And then because they were able to calm down and able to pull it together a little bit, they were then able to access the education that was going on. So the whole idea that it's all interrelated because it's very, very difficult for any kid to learn if they're dysregulated. And if we could take some of that off their shoulders and help them learn some skills and partner with parents on that, amazing things can happen. And looking forward to the future of that, too. I think somebody said, I think it was Kristen, maybe it said, the Skills for Success, one of the pieces of that is if parents have the same language as folks at school have it and we all work together, it's a wraparound of support for kids. And that can be, that is a dynamically important piece, it's very, very beneficial. So a lot of good things happening and thank you for your work. And thank you for that report, it's fantastic. So and then none of that counted as my superintendent's report. I was just a proud superintendent, so. We've had a great week in Carmel Clay Schools, and so I'm just going to go with the list. I'm not going to, but I'll try to hold back on all my commentary. But this is just, I'm just going to start. Number one, middle school math counts. Carmel Middle School, first place. Three Cougars placed in the top 10. Creekside Middle, second place. These are like steely-eyed math kids that are just like knocking it out. I am intimidated by them as an English Journalism major. Our debate team, Carmel High School, won the state. This is their second year in a row winning the state. So that's a two-peat for the debaters. If you remember last year, we had them come and actually argue on the stage. And they were so good, I would never argue with one of those kids. But our debate kids are just fantastic and they're going to keep that traveling trophy for another year. Carmel High School Cyber Patriots team. So Cyber Patriots are a team that does cybersecurity. So they train and train on cybersecurity and they're given these extremely difficult problems to solve and for them have to, they have to determine whether something's legit or whether it's some kind of nefarious things going on. So they qualified as one of only 28 teams that are now going to compete at the national level for, so the Cyber Patriots and cybersecurity. So I can guarantee you, they're going to get hired almost immediately. If not, they're hired already while they're in high school, just an amazing thing. Carmel High School German students won the state championship for, in a German competition, which is not just language, but also culture, there's a lot of segments to it. And so they came in on top. Great start with Carmel High School choir competitions. They went two of the top stops and were victorious at Pike, I believe. This is kind of fun, this is kind of my jam here because I really like this. It's the robotics news. So, you know, we talk a lot about the tech hounds and they are busy right now getting their robots ready and their programming. And they're like a corporation that works out of Carmel High School. But Creekside had four teams qualify for the finals and won the judges award in the robotics competitions. Collegewood, you saw tonight, had three teams competing in a regional contest this past weekend and Team 46665A won the entire competition. And that's what they were alluding to, I want to get that out straight. And so now they've qualified to compete at state, which takes place, like they said, in March on the field at Locust Oil Stadium. So our robotics is starting to load to K-12 now, which is just amazing. And then I get to the bell ringer. And the bell ringer has to be our girls' swim team. They won their 37th consecutive state championship. That is the longest winning streak of any sport in the country. That streak began in 1986. In 1986, I was 26. I had a full head of hair. I could run under 5 minutes and 30 seconds a mile for a 10K. I can't, that's just beyond my brain to handle, that they've been winning state championships and, you know, and just crazy long. So just a little bit about the meet because what's going to happen is this is going to be one of those things where people say, wow, that was a great meet. That was almost as good as the state meet in 2023. There, there, there was a historic meet and they're going to, that's going to set the standards for years to come. They had the largest margin of victory with 498 points. I didn't do the math, but I think you could add the points to several other teams and we'd still be victorious if they were all combined. They set one national record. They set five state records. At least two swimmers set a state record on Friday and beat it on Saturday. There was one, to talk about Indiana swimming, there was one race where Alex Shackell broke the record on Friday night. On Saturday, she broke her own record from the night before and the girl that got second beat her time from the night before. So the two of them broke the state record in the same race. And so Indiana swimming is in amazing shape. They won 10 of 12 events. And in many of those events, Dr. Oestreich, you were there, I think, one, we were 1, 2, 3, and several of them, we were like 1, 2, 5 or 1, 3, 6. So we had multiple kids in the final, you know, the final heat for the state championship. At the end of the day, our coach, Chris Plum, was chosen as the Coach of the Year. And that's not just a given because the team wins, that is chosen by your peers. And it's kind of special that way and that the other coaches in the state will recognize him as the best this year. And then not exactly related to swimming, but I thought this was just super cool. Our athletic director, Jimmy Enskeep, has been a great leader for athletics at Carmel High School. And the girls gave him his 100th state championship since he's been in charge of athletics at Carmel School. So 100 state championships for Mr. Enskeep. So we appreciate him and all his hard work. And he gives all the, you know, if you know Jimmy, he says, it's coaches, you know, it's coaches and it's parents. And he doesn't take any credit for much of anything, but he gets it ready to go and establishes a culture of excellence. So we really congratulate him on his 100th win at the state level. So that's historic. And then my last statement, I guess, is we have 66 school days left of the school year. So I count the days and I am so proud of all the Carmel Clay School folks sitting up here and out in the classrooms because they make them count. They make every day count and I appreciate that. And that concludes my superintendent's report for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Beresford. All right, so if there is no additional business to come before the board, may I have a motion to adjourn? Second, please. Meeting adjourned at 7:23.